Morning Commissioners, welcome and over to you Chair Harrington.
Good morning everyone and welcome to the day after the big solar eclipse. I hope that you all had the opportunity to take in the community joy that I got to see on the national news last night of folks experiencing that. We have a very full agenda today. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. We have a full complement of all four district commissioners. And our first topic is biogas resource recovery update and Clean Water Services, please.
Good morning Chair Harrington. Good morning Board of Directors. My name is Jack Lea. I'm the Chief Operations Officer at Clean Water Services. We are very excited to be presenting you on this topic this morning. And as you know, that the biogas resource recovery is a strategy that Clean Water Services has been exploring for a number of years, actually. Close to 10 years that we have been exploring into this area. And this last year, we had made tremendous progress in our findings and figuring out a way that it could potentially work at Clean Water Services. We're very excited to be presenting you of our findings today. With me today, we have Rick Shani, our interim engineering and the water technology director, as well as Bruce Corden, our business opportunities manager. And they actually have all the exciting details about RNG that they're ready to present with you today. Without further ado, I will pass it on to Rick for today's presentation. Thank you.
Great, thanks Jack. Do we have control? Well, no engineering presentation can't start without a schematic. So that's what we have today. I want to walk you through just some of the the basics of what's going on within the treatment plant. And I know you've all been out there and I've seen some of these things, but just, just some background. So the anaerobic digesters, those big ball tanks that we have at both Durham and Rock Creek are there to treat the solids that reproduce in the plant through the liquid process. So we've got wastewater solids coming in. This project is particular to Rock Creek. And at that, at this point in time, we don't have optional waste organics yet like we do at Durham. We're all very proud of the Durham Fog Program. It creates a lot of biogas, which I'll define in a minute, also revenue for tipping fees. So I want to make sure everybody's aware. That's something we're very actively exploring, expanding that type of capacity at Rock Creek. It really helps what it, what are already very good economics for the Rock Creek plant. So we put those materials in the digester, they ferment and we produce digester gas or biogas. We might say both of those terms. They mean the exact same thing. So just want to be clear on that. So coming out of the digesters, we've got the, the digester gas. And this schematic shows there's really four things that can happen with it. It can go to a waste gas burner, which is a flare. And unfortunately, that's what's going on at Rock Creek right now. We don't have the ability to use the COGEN system that has been there for decades and decades. It's been an amazing workhorse creating power and electricity for us, but it's antiquated technology. It doesn't meet air permit requirements and we can't upgrade it. It's just not feasible at this point in time. So we're having to flare the gas and we want to take advantage of using this as a resource. The gas can be put in boilers. And we are able to do some, some boiler use at Rock Creek with gas that is going right now. But it's not nearly the demand that we have for all of the gases in place. COGEN is the third from the top. It requires biogas treatment as well for the new COGEN system. So the old ones like Rock, that Rock Creek currently had, it's like an old Chevy that just runs. It doesn't need all the fancy stuff. It doesn't need the premium fuel. It'll just run. The new COGENs are much, and the permitting requirements are much more stringent. So it does require biogas treatment, mostly to remove hydrogen sulfide. And then of course, we reproduce electricity and hot water. The technology that we're going to be introducing or refreshing on today is a biogas membrane treatment system that allows the gas to be cleaned to such a quality that it's the same as natural gas. And it will go into the natural gas pipeline. So it's not a coincidence that that first part, that yellow, those yellowish looking towers are the same as COGEN. It's really the same biogas treatment that we have at Durham as a first step. What's different is there's a second step that utilizes membranes. And that's a physical barrier that gets rid of mostly carbon dioxide. So methane is the good energy source in digester gas, carbon dioxide. You can't have that when you put it in the pipeline. So it's got to be pretty much 99% methane. So it goes through that system. And it goes into the pipeline and that's what we call renewable natural gas.
Before you move off of this slide, for that biogas, so for the lower part there.
Yes.
Which part, or is that the part of the schematic that you later call the RNG facility?
We would call all of that the RNG facility. The, there's kind of three, there's one component that, there's some compressors that we're not showing here. So the facility itself includes the treatment, which is the biogas treatment. It includes a compressor to put it into the pipeline. That would be part of the facility as well, Chair Harrington. Does that answer your question?
So, no. The lower part that goes to RNG
Yes.
does not show. It shows a biogas slash membrane treatment.
Yes.
Okay. So to me, that is the part that is the RNG facility because it's specific to RNG.
Yes, I would 100% agree with you on that. And there's just the compressor piece that isn't shown. Yeah.
I have a question on that. The, the biogas treatment plus the COGEN engine isn't the biogas membrane treatment.
Correct.
So what's the, where's the men, where, I see where the biogas treatment is.
Challenged with, I'm afraid I'm going to shut everything down.
Or maybe I can help. So what those four items are, are four different uses for the biogas. So the first one is flaring. The second one is using it within boilers. The third one down is using it within a COGEN set to create electricity. And the fourth option is the renewable natural gas option.
And there's no COGEN engine. And then the, the brown in there on the last step.
Yes.
It's not the COGEN.
No, it's not. It's, it's a moisture removal process.
So that entire thing, it's the biogas and the membrane treatment combined.
Yes. Yes, that is correct. So COGEN, the one above, has a media that basically you put the digester gas through and it takes out certain contaminants. The, the membrane or the biogas facility, the renewable, has that same media. Then it has a system to remove moisture. Then it goes into membranes. And then it can be compressed and put into the pipeline. Okay, yeah.
And then the last one, just, just to check my own. Last time we did the tour, what we saw was the waste gas burner.
Mm hmm. Yeah. Very high flame.
Yeah.
People are calling because the flame's so high because we don't have the COGEN running anymore to take a good portion of the gas.
I can relate.
Yeah, yeah. It's an impressive visual, but we'd, we'd like to get rid of that impressive visual and use the gas.
Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Sorry, I have one other question. So there's more value to renewable natural gas than there is to the electricity? Is that what I'm?
Yeah, and we'll share some specific numbers to point that out, but they're both good options, but we took a pause in the last few months. In part because there's actually, Bruce is a wizard at finding grant money for us and there's a lot with COGEN. So we wanted to make sure, we'd kind of moved down a path, but I would say one nice thing about, we're never afraid to change course if it makes sense. We did, and we're going through that analysis with you. How those numbers shake out comparing the two. Okay, so what is renewable natural gas? So I think as we talked about on the previous slide, it is, it's digester gas. It's treated to a very high quality, which pretty much means it's 99% methane. And then through the membranes and so forth, it can go into the, into the pipeline. And it really has the same chemical composition as the natural gas does. And the natural gas company has very precise technology and instrumentation on their system to measure the gas that's being treated before it goes into the pipeline. It's their responsibility for their treatment system to meet their own standard before they put it into the pipeline. It has greatly reduced greenhouse gas emissions. So why do we say that? We're still using natural gas. It's related to the source of the gas. So when you're, when you're bringing out natural gas, when they're, when they're producing natural gas, they're extracting new carbon from the earth's crust. We're taking carbon that's already out there in the atmosphere and we're reusing it. So it's also not a finite resource like it is if you're producing natural gas normally. The other part that I think's a benefit here, we've been talking to various industries. They're all driven by supply chain, having sustainable supply chains. And so I think there's a real benefit to the region or industries to have this sustainable, shouldn't be that, sustainable supply chain available to them because they, their demand is there. They want to reduce their carbon footprint. They want to be able to show that. And so this is a benefit to them to being able to have this resource. Any questions on this one?
Rick, I have one. And I don't want to get into the detail, but you've been talking about this for 20 years because I've talked to you about it before.
Yeah.
On the finite resource, that's a little misleading. It is finite in that you only have so much capacity to produce. How much, I mean, you can't, you couldn't supply all of the natural area, for instance.
Oh, absolutely not. No.
What are, what are you saying when it's not, it is not a finite?
I think what, what we're saying is if you, unlike producing something in the earth, there's only so much in the earth's crust. If we could take it all, there, there's an, there is, there's no limit on how much we, we can't realistically produce it all, but we're reusing versus extracting there. So it's kind of a recycling.
You're not talking about your supply. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
All right.
Yeah. Okay, Bruce. So when we investigated this, one of the things we wanted to make sure we did before we went too far is, is, is look at business models and what seemed, what would make sense for us for an RNG project. Usually at our treatment plants, when we build improvements, the business model is, it's all on us, right? We, we design it, we build it, we operate and maintain it, we pay for it, et cetera. In this case, we decided that what we wanted to do is have a business model where we serve up the gas, the biogas, and the partner that we bring into the project does everything else. They are responsible for treating the gas. They're responsible for injecting it into the natural gas pipeline, selling the gas if, if they aren't going to use it themselves, et cetera. And so we went with that approach because, well, in part, it was because we didn't have the expertise that it takes to do this, both in terms of, you know, cleaning up the gas to a level that the pipeline can accept. We also didn't know the gas market. We didn't understand, you know, what it takes to play in that and to deal with the environmental credits that you create when you, when you have our renewable natural gas. There's, there's quite a paper trail for those credits. There's a lot of things you have to do in order to, to prove them.
Are you saying that the partnership goes back to the bottom line, to the biogas membrane treatment as well?
Yes.
Okay, I think that.
So, so everything from the treatment system into the pipeline is responsible, they're responsible.
Got it. Thank you.
Sure. So just getting into this a little further with the, the, the business model that we selected and comparing it how, to how we normally do things. You see the CWS, design, build, operate. That's what we normally do, which I just described. The public-private partnership involves bringing in a private partner. Economics, speaking of economics, you know, we wanted a situation where we weren't having to be at the mercy of the market. We wanted a partner who could buy the gas from us, pay us a fixed price for it with inflation adjustments if we're going to do a long-term arrangement and not be in a situation where, you know, we don't know what the future looks like and so forth. So we were, we were risk averse in that sense. We also, in terms of our role, wanted to just serve up the gas and be done with it. If we were involved in, in every step of the way approach, we'd have to find buyers of the gas. We would also have to make sure the gas meets the very stringent pipeline standard that Northwest Natural has for, for bringing gas into their pipeline system. And of course, we'd also be responsible for designing and, and, and constructing and, and being responsible for O and M and so forth on the system. So, and then when you look at flexibility, which is basically, you know, how much room do we have to change course if future conditions change, since this is, this is likely to be a long-term arrangement. You know, we wanted a situation where if things came up that required improvements or more money spent, we could at least cost share with a partner on instead of having to be responsible for all of it. We would also want to make sure that we had a right of first refusal in case someone came in and wanted to buy the system from our partner. And we also wanted to have certain termination rights. And, you know, those are important, but if you look at it from the partner's standpoint, they're investing $10, $12 million in this project. They don't want us to run and, you know, be left high and dry. So this is something that requires some, some negotiation. If we were to do the project ourselves, of course, we'd have complete freedom to stop it, abandon it, do whatever we want. But we'd also be assuming a lot more risk. And so we didn't want to do that. And, and that's basically in a nutshell why we chose the business model that we did. One of the things we were concerned about as we looked into RNG further was, is this realistic? I mean, can society potentially produce enough of this stuff to actually displace a lot of natural gas in, in the nation's pipeline system? So we did a little research and we found a couple of reports. The first one was, actually, that's not a DEQ report. It's an Oregon Department of Energy report from 2018. It basically said there's enough potential sources in Oregon to supply all of the residential customers for gas in Oregon. I think it's important to point out that wastewater treatment plants are one source of this gas, but we also have landfills. There are other technologies besides digesters, which are, I don't think quite ready for prime time, but lots of research is being done to use things like forest waste and agricultural waste and so forth. Really anything that's organic could be fair game to turn into a renewable natural gas. Looking at Northwest Natural's website, they believe that a combination of RNG and hydrogen and efficiency gains could make the gas network completely carbon neutral. They are doing work on hydrogen right now. They have some test facilities for that. There's a, a certain amount of pipeline space that you could allocate to hydrogen. Not a lot, but it would help in mixing it with RNG to, to displace fossil natural gas. Currently in the, in the United States, there are 757 RNG projects up and running. And in 2017, there were only 50. So a lot of progress has been made. Of course, a lot more needs to be made as well.
Of those projects, are they all putting the RNG into gas pipeline for communities or are some of them just within like industry direct pipe location to another industry?
That's a good question and I don't know the answer.
Well, that level of growth is, is significant in that timeframe. But I, I wanted to see a probe to see if a majority of them might be with gas companies getting that product and essentially recycling the natural, the RNG, right? Or as, as I understand it, RNG allows Northwest Natural to take advantage of additional capacity in their existing pipeline that they currently can't utilize. So it's really a double win. If I'm, I am correct in understanding. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
And I, I think one thing that's being done with a, a lot of this gas is it goes directly into tanks and it's used to fuel vehicles. So it's not going to be in the pipeline in that sense.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. So we issued an RFP and we chose Northwest Natural to be our, our private partner. There are several reasons why we think they make a good one. First of all, you know, they're a longstanding, stable utility business that lends itself to a long-term relationship. You know, when you issue an RFP, some of the people who propose maybe these quick and dirty LLCs where you've got some investors who want to make some, some money in a hurry and maybe aren't the best people to use for a long-term arrangement. Also, the RNG use would be within Northwest Natural's pipeline system. So it's local. We wouldn't be dealing with someone who wanted to sell the environmental credits somewhere else. Northwest Natural is also very motivated to have RNG. They have a 30% greenhouse gas emissions reduction goal by 2035 in the product that they sell. They're also able to offer us a fixed price for the gas that was really a meaningful price. We couldn't find that with other proposers. And it's important to point out that there was a new legislation that was passed in 2019 called Senate Bill 98 that allows Northwest Natural to buy RNG and actually invest in assets that create RNG and basically pay the cost with the rate payer base that they have. Before that, they were limited. They could only pay the fossil fuel price for any gas they put in their system. And since RNG costs more to develop, they really were shut out of the RNG market until the law changed. So that's, that's an advantage that they have. And that's why they could offer us a fixed price. And someone who's a little more entrepreneurial wouldn't be able to do that. They wanted to sell us the gas on, you know, market conditions indexes. It could go up and down and so forth. So.
That's a big issue in relationship to an investor-owned utility where it's on the investors to provide the, the revenue base where this is customer-based. My other question is, was this partnership, did this have to go through an approval process at OPUC as well?
The, the project will have to go through one after it's built.
So the partnership didn't, but the capital piece will?
It will, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Northwest Natural also, you know, has RNG front row center in terms of its ability to, to deal with climate change and, and so forth. I think it's essential that if they're going to survive, they're going to need a lot of RNG in their system. We have, of course, as I mentioned, the goal they have of reducing greenhouse gas emissions by 30% in their product by 2035. There also was the Oregon Climate Protection Program, which subjected them to caps on the greenhouse gas emissions that emerge from natural gas, declining caps over time. This, this law or this program was struck down by the Oregon Court of Appeals in late 2023. So DEQ has gone back to the drawing board and they're developing a new program that will also have these caps in it. So I believe it was struck down on a technicality that had to do with notice requirements. It wasn't something that went to the heart of actually having the caps themselves. So Northwest Natural expects to be, you know, subject to these regulations, which is another reason why they're so motivated to have RNG. They have developed two of their own RNG facilities, one of which is a Tyson Foods Processing Plant in the Midwest. I don't know about the other one. They, and they also have three contracts to purchase RNG from multiple sources. They say that currently they have about 3% of their gas supply being allocated to RNG that they can buy under contracts. So they're just getting started, but you know, that's, that's what the number is now. All right, back to me. So I mentioned that we, we did want to take a pause before we moved and signed on the dotted line per se. And we're still in the process of negotiating and there's a few key things we need to figure out with Northwest Natural. But the economics were important to revisit and make sure this deal, how it compared to the COGEN project, especially given some of the things that were out there for funding to help with a COGEN project. So we compared some of the costs of COGEN that need to generally be assumed, we have really good numbers for, because we've been running COGEN at Durham for a long time. So we got records on what it costs to replace the media and to do upkeep on the engines and how many staff time it takes to keep that system in place. So we feel like having that history gave us a, a nice accurate model on the COGEN side. We also know what the benefits are through the RNG project because they are spelled out in the contract. We have a defined number. They pay us based upon how much gas reproduce. And of course, it changes as we produce more gas over time, but in rough numbers, kind of over, over an average in today's dollars, it's about $600,000 a year that we'll gain in overall revenue by taking on and, and having them pay us for the gas that we're getting. We use a 20-year basis. That's pretty standard when we do an evaluation, but it also matches up to the contract terms that we have in place for Northwest Natural. And at the end of the analysis, that showed us that the RNG has about an $8 million net present value advantage over the COGEN system. So there's pretty significant economic advantage that's in place based upon all the most recent numbers and including all the, the funding options that are available for, for COGEN itself. So why does RNG have better economics? Well, it has little or no capital cost. What does that mean? I know that sounds confusing. It is a P3. What helps, I think, clarify it, there's a lot, there are a lot of models for P3, public-private partnerships. This one is specifically a design, build, own and operate. So they're doing it all, including the design. They're going to operate the system, own it, maintain it. So we don't have to deal with those things. It's a model that we're a little bit unfamiliar with. We really like to know what's happening in the plant. So we have provisions to review the design and do check-ins, but we are providing, they are, they're taking on the risk and the responsibility. So they're the ones that are putting up the capital cost.
So this is all from a Clean Water Services perspective?
Exactly. Yes, they're paying, they're paying it. And of course, that's factored into how much money they're giving us. This is from a Clean Water Services perspective. The, and it doesn't require additional FTE. So I wrote down a few numbers just, so the COGEN or the operation of COGEN, it's about $400,000 a year for the media. And the maintenance of the COGEN system, it's about $170,000 a year for the staff time to take care of all of that system and facility. So we don't have to bear the burden of that and we don't have capital costs. And even with those grant funds available for COGEN, there's still a capital cost. It isn't free. So that's in a nutshell why the economics look, look so good at this point in time. The other thing that I like about the contract, we do have a guaranteed income. We have inflation. But if there are any windfalls, and we've talked about some of the things that could happen for Northwest Natural to get more money, we are able to re, under those situations, we renegotiate with them, reopen the contract and share in, in that. So we do have the ability to get more. They don't have the ability to drop, you know, the, the amount that we get paid for the gas.
Has Northwest Natural done this previously? I don't know.
Bruce? Ours is the first one, at least in this region, where they're actually owning the means of production, so to speak. They have contracts to buy from other people who are, who are creating the RNG themselves, but.
They haven't made this type of investment previously.
Correct. Yes. I should also mention, price they're offering us for the gas is more than, is more than, than they're selling it to their ratepayers for, so.
And why is that?
They're able to do that because they can rate base the costs across their entire rate base. So if they pay us one price and they sell it for less, then the difference is something that their, their ratepayers as a whole absorb.
And they're doing that betting on the future?
Yes, yes. That's right. Yeah.
They also have to meet that 30% reduction.
Yeah. So there's a few things just.
Will they get the credit or will we also get the credit?
They'll get the environmental credits.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and if you look at it from their standpoint, this is more about regulatory compliance and, and maybe it's existential for them as opposed to trying to make money from it. So. Just, I want to be clear because eventually, hopefully, we'll be back talking about the contract. So there are a couple of things that if their operating costs were to go up for reasons, we've defined some assumptions in the contract. I keep talking about hydrogen sulfide in the gas. So we have control over that. We have a lot of data. We're very comfortable with the number where we're at. But they've had instances where the operating costs went up a lot for them. And so we're being good partners. We're being fair. We have put in some provisions to allow some adjustments to be made. But we've also limited how much those can be. And the model would still be very robust, even if we did have to make some changes. Hopefully we'll be back to get into the details on that piece, but.
Yeah, what they explained to us, there's a wastewater plant that they do RNG with. And that plant didn't have very good hydrogen sulfide control out of the digesters, whereas Clean Water Services routinely controls hydrogen sulfide. And we can do that by adding a chemical called ferric chloride.
Yeah.
So for us, it, there's less risk. So for us, it there's less risk for Northwest Natural to work with us because of our ability to to manage our hydrogen sulfide.
And that that plant was not a municipal wastewater treatment plant. It was a a company owned plant for a manufacturing facility. So both a different situation.
Yeah, our gas is kind of a it's a softball for them to treat to compared to some of the other things that are out there. A much harder for landfill gas or even some of the gas they're treating that they withdraw to make natural gas. We do want. So the economics, of course, the more the more biogas we make, the happier Northwest Natural is, the happier we all are. The economics get improved as that gas production increases. So we're currently at about three hundred and sixty standard cubic feet per minute. Our target is to get to about six hundred standard cubic feet per minute. And that will be accomplished in a couple of ways. We've we're doing the West Basin Master Plan. We've looked at growth within the basin. So just by the nature of growth and population increases, you know, we get about a two percent increase, but we really are very much out. We're working with our source control people, our lab folks and the research and innovation department have developed method to test all these different feedstocks and figure out which ones give us the most bang for the buck. So it's really in adding those feedstocks that we can more quickly escalate up to the higher gas numbers that we're looking for. And we do have the Brew Doctor is currently providing a feedstock. And as I mentioned, we're looking to test and continue to find other other sources.
You're confident you're gonna three hundred and fifty to six hundred. There's a significant gap, but you're confident.
I'm confident we'll get there. It's a it's a how? What's the slope of the curve? You know, can we can we? Bruce, do you remember how quickly we intended to get to the six hundred?
I don't. I know that that we expect a hundred to come from the added feedstocks and the rest will be from population growth. So. Yeah, we actually have a person on our staff who has a PhD, and she wrote her thesis on feedstocks for digesters. So very, very apt to have this person working for us right now.
And Northwest Natural's willing to participate. If there's additional costs to take in feedstock, Northwest Natural is also interested. It's it's a partnership in the sense that they're willing to participate in the cost to bring in some of the extra feedstocks. So we have the capability to bring some in now, but if we grow it to a a certain nice high level and we we're getting tipping fees, then they will they will share in the capital for making that happen. Okay, back to Bruce.
So we did want to let you know about some of the challenges we faced in the negotiation process for this. And remember, it's a twenty year contract. A lot can happen in twenty years. So we we thought about a lot of what ifs. And I just wanted to give you a a sample of what some of these are. What happens if the character of the biogas changes during the twenty year contract? This could be something where, you know, maybe we get a new industry in our service that's giving us different wastewater. The gas itself is is kind of a function of what the wastewater is. So if you change the wastewater, you may be changing the gas. That's something that that we've talked about, and I think we have a partnership approach to dealing with. If it requires more capital or increased expenses to deal with, we 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 want to deal it deal deal with it with a cost share arrangement with with our partner. What if we want to purchase the project? We may want to do that somewhere down the line, and so we're negotiating a provision now where after ten years, we can reopen the contract and we can talk about purchasing the project from them. What if somebody else wants to purchase it? We've got a right of first refusal that we've negotiated that's going to be in the contract that would give us the right to buy the project for the same offer that someone else made. What if we need to stop producing biogas because of regulatory changes? Maybe we need to reengineer our treatment plan and we won't have digesters anymore. Well, we've made it so that we have the right to terminate the contract if that happens. What if there's a huge change in the technology of wastewater treatment? And we want to jump on the bandwagon and save our rate payers some money by incorporating this technology. And as a result, we are not producing biogas anymore. We have the right to terminate the contract if if that happens. What if Northwest Natural wants to sell the RNG in other markets? As I mentioned, the the current plan is to sell this gas to their existing rate payers. You know, you and I and just at the normal fossil fuel gas prices. But what if they want to sell it to someone and this, you know, ends up being a windfall for them? We have a provision in the contract where we reopen it and we talk about changing the price in response to their increase in revenue. So those are things that we've we've been talking about and and have a pretty good handle on, I think. Another thing that that's been that was a sticking point, I think we've got it resolved now is what is the quality that our biogas has to meet when they take it off our hands and treat it? Their treatment system is is built to 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 treat gas that's of a certain quality coming into it. And if our gas is not that quality, then their treatment system may fail to treat it to the standard needed for the pipeline, which, as we said, is really stringent. So we've talked a lot about this, this, and we've made changes to the requirements. And I think we're at a point now where we were pretty much in agreement on on what 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 kind of specifications we need to meet. Another issue that came up was we needed to test our gas in order to know if it was going to meet their specifications and so forth. And so we found that testing was really difficult. Testing involves taking samples, sending them to an out of state lab and having them tested. Our own lab can't do these tests, so we needed to have a contract lab do it. What we found was that the the samples themselves were being contaminated with atmospheric air. So we were getting bad results from the 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 tests, the the test lab. So we did this several times, and we tried different approaches to taking the samples. We worked with Northwest Natural closely on this. And we finally came up with an approach that we think we can believe in that's giving us results that that we can we can trust. So but but that did take a while. So next steps, let's see. I thought we were going to take the dates down because we're we're not quite there yet on some of this. We were hoping to meet this week and 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 really get some things wrapped up, but their chief negotiators on vacation, so that's going to have to wait until next week, we think. At any rate, we hope to come back soon and present you with the negotiated terms, at least the major ones that matter. And then follow that up with board approval of the contract.
So commissioners, directors, go ahead, Commissioner Trace. I'm this is exciting. There's there's no question. And my my hats off to the creative innovative side that, you know, presents this and looks at how do we take this this process and bring it to the 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 best use possible. I'm also trying. So hats off on that. I'm also trying to understand this from the customer perspective, just and I'm just thinking a little bit ahead about how we how we communicate this type of thing. And I'm and I'm wondering if there's been a look at what Northwest Natural Gas customer rates have been doing and what what change might be, you know, as a result of this type of process going into rate base. And at the same time, our rates and what's happening there because we're linking our, to some degree, we're linking ourselves together. And I just I'm just thinking about how we how we communicate in use customers about this project.
Well, one thing I can tell you about their purchases of RNG. Senate Bill ninety eight limits them to what what's called five percent of their revenue requirement being spent on RNG. So they can't go hog wild. You know, this will be very incremental. And the other thing is, when they sell gas, except for, well, except for the RNG, which is an exception, they have to sell it at the wholesale rate at which they purchase it. They can't mark up the gas. So, you know, the wholesale market goes up and down, you know, throughout the year, there are different peaks and valleys. And so, you know, when you see increases in rates, oftentimes that's also due to all the the overhead costs that they have.
I understand.
So, yeah.
And the only point I'm making here is just thinking down the road about what the what the public perception is about a project like this and how we communicate what the value is. And not necessarily, as we all watch energy prices dramatically increase, how are we insulating ourselves from being connected to that?
Yeah. And Director Trace, your your point is well made, and we will connect with Northwest Natural. So we have better communication materials when the question actually come to us from a public.
At our previous last meeting, just a few days ago, really, right? Yeah, we talked specifically about that, having a joint public relations and communication plan about this project. That was important to them, and it was important to us. So that specific question, we'll we'll work through that with them and we'll share that public relations and communication plan with our board.
That's great. But like I said, this is it's it's very exciting. It's it's really exciting. And all all new ideas on the energy front are so important. And like I said, congratulations. Anything else, commissioners?
I would echo the comments. You've been working on this a long time, but it's nice that you've come to the point that you have, and just one more example of good work. In regard to the twelve million roughly that I guess that Northwest Natural would be investing, I think I heard, did I hear twelve million?
No, there was. That is the right number. I think at least that they've told us at this point. They haven't designed it yet, of course, but that's their ballpark number.
Yeah, it'd be interesting what the contract's going to say in terms of their recovery. Nobody's going to put twelve million in and allow you to walk at any time you want just because you don't like their issue. They got to get get some recovery. So it'll be interesting when you come back to see that. And then the final issue I'd be really remiss if I didn't raise it. And I raised it with you, Jack, the other day by email is this is a prime example of a UBIT tax issue. I mean, it's under the tax code. And you you need to look at that really, really well because you're 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 not a general purpose government. You're not. And the UBIT, it's this is it. I mean, if you flare the gas, you got no issue because or if you did it yourself, you got no issue. But when you're selling product, it's under the business income tax. And so just figure a way to not have to pay that. I mean, it's it's a very steep thirty five percent. And so you want to understand what you're doing. Pretty look at that very carefully.
Yeah, thank you, Director Rogers. We took your question very seriously. We are actually in the process of looking for a tax attorney that can actually help us interpret those complications and nuances. And we we definitely take your question very seriously. We're researching to that.
A little free tax advice from one of your board members. Anything else? Yep, we're all just total thumbs up on this, ready to go, really proud of the work that you're doing and look forward to the next steps that you've outlined. Oh, sorry, Diane.
I just wanted to say and to really acknowledge Bruce Corden's work. Bruce does our business opportunities at Clean Water Services. And quite frankly, early on, I gave this sort of a thirty percent chance of moving forward, but he certainly turned that now to we're getting close to the end. And this would not have happened without someone like Bruce Corden on our team. And Bruce partnering certainly with Jack and and with Rick and his team. And it won't happen unless they work collaboratively together. So but I do want to give Bruce the credit because it's been amazing, Bruce. You've you've been very tenacious and very hopeful, but you've always analyzed the business opportunity really well. And you knew when it wasn't going to move forward, and you knew where there was the opportunity. I wanted the board to hear that, that this is happening because of your vision. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Well, and the gas company has been a very professional deal with, so that's helped a lot, too. So.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you for practicing the art of the possible, and timing is everything. Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you. All right. So we're right on schedule, and we will move to the second topic, transportation policy discussion. Welcome, team.
A little bit. Good morning, Board of Commissioners, and thank you for having us. We are here to totally change topics and talk about the transportation policy conversations that are happening and setting us ourselves up for success and making sure we're representing the board's policy direction in a couple of distinct areas. Our trip to DC as we participate as staff on your behalf on the J-PAC trip. And then in the twenty twenty five legislative session and that ongoing conversation that's happening starting a couple of months ago. So first we'll go over the DC trip and confirm that the board is supportive of the proposed key messages for the regional portion of the trip, and then discuss what county specific goals you would like to have staff to bring into the county specific day. And then we'll turn to the twenty twenty five state transportation package and work through how you want us to prioritize what we're doing, if there are projects, and identify your concerns so we can continue to give you information to help you in the various tables that you will be participating at participating at in that in that conversation. So we'll start with the DC trip. And as you may recall, this is an annual trip that's put together jointly by the J-PAC partners primarily set up by TriMet and Metro's joint federal lobbying staff. But we go out as a region and speak as a region to our federal delegation to advocate for those things that will help connect the regional multimodal system. Just to land you in this, it's a three day trip. Normally, a commissioner joins us, but unfortunately, they, despite everything we said, planned it right over budget season, so a number of elected officials aren't able to join us this year. But May fourteenth is the day we meet with the congressional delegation. We pick up as much of the delegation in the metro region as possible. And even every once in a while, someone from outside the region is willing to meet with us, and we will take them up on that offer to tell the story of what the region does. May fifteenth, we meet with agencies, so the US Department of Transportation primarily to talk through opportunities, find out what their work is and how we can write better applications in the broadest sense to bring in more resources into the region. And sometimes with committee staff as well, who help with appropriations processes. And then on May sixteenth, the Washington County as a geography does a delegation day where Washington County works with the cities that are in attendance to tell the story of what's happening in Washington County as a geography in a joint message around what it is that we are trying to accomplish to make sure that the community of across Washington County gets services that is also brings in federal funding. For the regional portion of the trip, there is the we have been working on, and it's coming to J-PAC, I believe, next week to confirm that this is the purpose and messaging that will be brought forward. So we wanted to check in with the board to see that there's an agreement here. And this is about making sure that our delegation knows that we come as one region, we speak with one voice. And we want to thank them for what they've done so far and ask them to continue to do so at higher and higher levels, bringing back that federal investment into our infrastructure. The key messagings this year, in years past, we started out highlighting a couple of big projects, and our list of projects got longer and longer and longer and less and less effective from our from our delegation standpoint. So instead, this year, the the goal is to focus on four main outcomes. And I think what you see reflected in here and in some of the conversations that have taken place is really taking that framework that your board discussed with us in November and then again in January, which is included in your packet. That framework is really reflected in these key messages and in in crosswalking those two document or the these four statements in that in that document. So revitalization of local communities with transit and equity oriented oriented investments very much fits in a number of our key strategies within the framework that are that your board has reviewed. Improving mobility options to increase access to low carbon transit that is convenient, reliable, affordable, and reduces congestion is very much reflected in the transit and active transportation pieces of the framework. Creating a safer transportation system without serious crashes, injuries or fatalities is the number one first thing you read on our our transportation framework. And then modernizing the transportation infrastructure for climate resilience also reflected throughout our transportation framework. That's what will be brought to the J-PAC table next week to discuss and give their thumbs up so that way we're all rowing in the same direction as a region, but wanted to checkpoint that with the board before that conversation. And then for the county day, we are still, we have. And then for the county day, we are still, we haven't started the conversation of what the specifics of those meetings will be with our city partners. So wanted to come to you first to give us direction about how we should be framing up those conversations. We are working with our VSA team to get these meetings scheduled with the four members of our delegation that represent pieces of Washington County or all of Washington County. And so it'll, from Washington County, you have myself and Jessica attending. And then Hillsborough, Walton and Wilsonville, I'll bring in elected officials and staff. We're still coordinating with Wilsonville. Traditionally, they don't join us on this piece of the trip, but seeing if they want to come into the conversation. As your board directs us, we will then work with those partners to develop the best messaging around those things. So the policy questions, because that was really fast, hopefully so will the trip be. But first is, does the board support the proposed key messages for the regional portion of the trip? So those four points. And then wanted to have a discussion with you about what your top priorities for us to build our Washington County Day agenda around. So with that, I'll let you answer those policy questions on the DC portion of the trip.
Okay, commissioners.
Thank you, Erin. Them, like reliving or like telling the story from last time, you're right on. I think our delegates, one of the things we heard is succinct sort of message that is, what is one project that you want me to find? So I think you're right and I'm in support of these messages that you have highlighted. I think they look really good and they tell the story of Washington County and yeah.
Okay, moving on, next. No comments?
I'm, I'm with key messages.
Okay. Okay, I just have a quick question, well, and a couple of comments. So Commissioner, if I already let Metro know that the timing of this trip is really bad, being right smack in budget season, so it's important for Metro to know that. Of course, there's never a good time with this Congress, so. So I understand, Erin, that you're making this trip. So we'll have to figure out, given how hot and heavy the politics will continue to be through May and June with Metro on the stakeholder advisory table, how to cover that while you're on this trip. Then the other thing relates to the first key message, if we could go back to slide five. And I don't have any problem with these key messages at all. I'm thumbs up on them. But related to revitalizing local communities. So I know that we are not unique as a state in terms of having many or what we have labeled orphan highways. And so to that degree, I know we're doing a lot, cities, counties, metro, trying to work with ODOT to get these facilities improved so that they're at least at an acceptable level for us to take them over locally. They've just been so ignored that it's not reasonable for us to just take them as is. So I'm wondering if it might be useful to inform our federal delegation that this condition is a hindrance for us and is requiring our work and our energy here. You know, it's a little hard for me to recall since the EPA has dismantled their smart growth efforts and their great community efforts. It's, you know, it, there's, maybe they've, they have been starting to re-event that under some other name that I'm just not in the lingo with. But, so that's the only thing I thought I would mention. And then when I look at not just the key messages, but you asked about top priorities. I looked at the pages that, that you included in the packet. And I for one, do not forget the big bridge projects that we have here in Washington County, AKA Basalt Creek Parkway Bridge. We, our staff did follow through with our support on a grant. We didn't get it. We still have a need. And that bridge is needed for connectivity, particularly for not only residents, but also industry. And I don't know that our current delegation is, is tracking that. That's another impediment that we need. So it isn't just supporting those firms that have received funding for the CHIPS Act because that's the, the big nationwide thrust. We have these other community expansion needs as well. So those are the only things that have been on my mind of whether or not they're important for this specific trip and the call-out messages I just totally leave to you.
Thank you. I, I will say to your points about the jurisdictional transfer and bringing roads up to standards. I do think that there's a piece of that that we can work into the local conversation using TV highway or Farmington roads as examples. Is, those impact the geography of Washington County as it connects from the easternmost border into the westernmost urbanized areas, not the most western areas of the county. So we, we can work that into some of that prioritization and then looking at projects like the Basalt Creek. And maybe even Southwest Corridor comes to mind sometimes to time, making sure that people can connect from where they live to where they work and goods can get to market more simply and easily as key components to how we frame up Washington County's day. So I appreciate that feedback and that's how I would use it. Definitely appropriate for DC trip.
Thank you. Alrighty, let's keep going.
Great. Now I turn it over to other people as soon as I find our slides. And so just wanted to transition over to the 2025 state transportation package. So we'll walk through why it's important to Washington County, what the state does with its revenue. And then how, the tables at which your participation are going to be key for setting messages that aren't just Washington County, but our association. So with that, I'll turn it over first to Jessica.
Right, thanks, Erin. So as we start looking ahead to the 2025 discussions, we wanted to first frame it as the impact on our transportation funding and then our transportation system. So that's what my two slides are going to go over. So this graph is probably familiar to you. It's in the CIP and we've used it in various presentations, but it has a different color scheme now. We wanted to split out to show state revenues, county revenues, and then we have a grant, little tiny slice of grant pie that that could be anywhere from federal, state, or regional funding, all in one bucket. So the important thing here, of course, is that we rely on state guys, state gas tax in a 50-30-20 split that is a statutory requirement currently. That goes, that's a big part of our funding. And so that's a really important piece for us to keep in mind as the state is looking to these discussions. We also get funding for transit. This is a really important thing for us. It allows us to engage with ride connection to provide shuttle services throughout the county as well as providing some first last mile to TriMet services. The, I'll make sure I'm not missing my points here. But one important thing, and I know we've talked about this a little bit. The state has talked a lot about needing to diversify their revenue sources, right? Away from gas tax as gas tax is declining. So in our county slice there, we have county gas tax, we have county vehicle registration fee. So those are local options that we're allowed to do, our local version of the state tax and fee. So as the state looks at new revenue sources such as road user charge based on vehicle miles traveled, we want to make sure that we can be part of the conversation to get a share of that as well. And also a potentially that we're able to do something on the local level. And so those things will all be part of the discussions going forward over the next year and into 2025. But we wanted to frame that as part of our transportation funding. And next, to frame it as part of the transportation system. So this, the map is showing with the more urbanized part of the county and how our priority arterials and priority collector system interconnect and run through the cities and throughout the urban areas, making a lot of paths for our people to travel to jobs, schools, other amenities. It also is showing on the pie chart that we maintain more than half of the centerline miles in the county. And this goes back to how important the funding is for us to be able to keep up with operations and maintenance of all of these roadways that are important to us. The map also shows how there's a mix of state, county, and city roads that all intertwine there. And where we get, and some of those are the orphan highways that Erin was just talking about, TV highway, Farmington and others. So as we think about our needs with the transportation package going into 2025, we want to tell the story about connectivity, mobility, resiliency, safety, and partnership and connect that back to why the state shares its revenue directly with counties, with cities, and how important that funding is to all of us.
Can I ask a couple of clarifying questions? For the pie chart? When you say over there, the cities, 965, those are the cities funding or it's the road miles in Washington County for arterial and collector roadways that are within the cities?
Those are city, city-owned and maintained road miles, yes.
So not the city-owned and maintained neighborhood streets? Because this slide is only on arterials and collectors.
We realized this morning.
Go get a chair.
Well, I hope to just be a second. So I'm Stephen Roberts, Land Use and Transportation Director for the record. So the total mileages that you see there, those are all inclusive. So that's all city arterials, collectors, local streets. And the same for the state miles and then the county, that's our entire county managed roadway network, so.
Okay, so I, what's happened, I think in part, is that our map and our pie charts use similar coloring.
And we, on the framework where we originally had them, they're on separate pages. So we didn't realize that they looked like they correlated to one another. So we want to be clear that the arterial and collector colors on the map are not related to the pie chart.
Okay, so then as follow-up to today's work session, I'm not going to speak to what messages we need to get at the state conversation or anything. I would like a pie chart that does have total road miles in Washington County, but has a slice out of that county. I want to, I want to clearly understand for the county what ones are within the UGB versus road miles in the rural. And also the percentage, we have URMD to take care of the road miles for the neighborhood streets in the urban and incorporated areas. So it can still be orange, but I need to see what those slices are within those orange.
Okay, yeah. Bring that back.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with the fact that you're trying to inform us all. But this goes back to, you look at one county, you look at one county. And so we have to be clear about that, and the, the UUA road miles needs to be positioned near the cities, right? Because that's really a city role. Versus the other thing that's unique to us next is the arterials and collectors that we take responsibility for. But we need the slice just for rural and then there's the slice within the UGB because that's unique to us versus say a Multnomah County. So it's, it's all there. The total's right. I get that. But we have to be clear about how many roles we have chosen to take on.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just a footnote to that, could you also indicate the number of bridges in and out?
Oh, yeah.
Because the bridges are very expensive.
Yeah, we also have a lot of culverts too, because Washington County has not hyped and paved over a lot of streams. So, thank you. Good, good clarification.
On that, on that question, the, the vehicle registration fee, when we raised those rates in like 2018, I think, 17, 18, those were originally designed to address bridges and culverts correctly? Am I correct?
Culverts primarily, but there were also some bicycle and pedestrian enhancement projects that were baked into that.
And does this show up in the funding here? Does that show up in the funding?
Yes, the pie chart includes the county vehicle registration fee as one of those county funding sources.
But not necessarily the title culverts?
No, we are try, what we've done with a lot of these graphics is we can't tell the whole story in one pie chart. So in using this framework with our state partners, we didn't put as much details in that we can work through how to represent some of that.
It's just that when Commissioner Rogers was asking about that, it brought me back to the funding sources and those topics. Thank you.
And I'm going to turn it over to Carly to talk more about the 2025 look ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Commissioners. For the record, my name is Carly Silva-Gabrielson, one of your government relations managers. I'm going to cover the 2025 look ahead in addition to some of the interim work that we're going to be seeing. The first slide is in regards to the Joint Legislative Committee on Transportation. We are going to see a statewide roadshow, which will consist of listening sessions and project tours. The roadshow will essentially be a fast-track version of what we saw in 2017. And I do want to flag that we still have the tentative schedule that, that has the first event starting next week, but there, there is chatter that it might be pushed back to May. So as soon as we have that confirmed, we will let you know. As you're aware, ODOT is operating with a significant budget deficit due to the decline of fuel tax revenue, the impact of inflation, and increased costs for operation and maintenance across the board. ODOT is also facing restrictions on how they can use federal funds and state funding, and they do not have the ability to shift funds from dedicated projects or programs to pay for the backlog of maintenance. ODOT will need diversified funding to address the backlog that we're experiencing to provide a safe and reliable transportation system for Oregonians. Due to this significant financial reality with ODOT, the 2025 legislation will likely prioritize spending on operation and maintenance, addressing safety issues, fulfilling commitments made in House Bill 2017 that have yet to been fulfilled, and possibly addressing structural revenue reform, which is, is very needed as we all know. In regards to the structural revenue reform, I do want to flag that there does continue to be some in the stakeholder groups that are mentioning that the local revenue split, the 50-30-20 should, should be on the table. But I do want to be clear that our coalition of local government stakeholders are, are really united and, and our position that that needs to be maintained for us to be able to maintain our services. So in considering this lens, and in addition to your adopted transportation framework focused on providing and maintaining a safe, accessible, connected, multimodal transportation system with sustainable and reliable ongoing revenue streams and strengthening and maintaining strong collaborative partnerships with local jurisdictions, agencies, and community partners, which projects should we recommend for a tour for the roadshow? Chair, I'll turn it over to you for a conversation.
So first to clarify, is the tour for the joint committee members?
Correct, yes. It is a joint committee that's going to be going on the statewide tour and engaging with the community.
Okay. Do you have, does staff have any thoughts just to get started in terms of?
We, we do, of course. So, you know, there are several crucial projects. A friend of mine, of course, Farmington and TV Highway. We also thought that it'd be valuable to highlight the many projects that we have in the midst of construction or that were recently completed, frankly. or that were recently completed, frankly, mostly with county money. We also think that there are other valuable projects that were recently completed with a misstep in state funding money. Reedsville Trail is another example. We also have recommended the Highway forty-seven Fern Hill Maple Intersections. So I think there's a lot that we can show the committee that will really make them understand the unique dynamics here in Washington County with our transportation system. Erin, do you want to add?
Just to prime the pump here for Commissioners in answering the question, the two big bridge projects, right? The one in Commissioner Teresa's district, Laidlaw-Salsman area. We've had that come to us in work sessions, design is done, it's all a small matter of funding. But also the Basalt Creek Parkway Bridge. Do you need any of my colleagues to join you on said tour?
I think that would be very valuable, and as soon as we have that date confirmed, we'll let you know.
We'll work with your schedules. Okay, the other thing I was wondering is, I think I saw the one-pager that you included in the packet, the transportation policy framework with both charts and map. I think it's appropriate for us to send a letter to the Washington County State Delegation as well as to the committee in advance of that August date, that August tour date, or to put it in their hands so that they know we actively work transportation needs. We're different than other counties. We don't just say gimme, 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 we have a lot of skin in the game. And Clackamas County has had a lot of skin in the game, too. They've used local improvement districts like nobody's business. They've used all the levers, the only lever they haven't used is a dedicated property tax for transportation improvements.
I'm reflecting on the last tour. And I remember I did a presentation from WA perspective about what was needed. And I'm wondering if we're thinking about that type of approach as well.
I think any major transportation project needs to have the variety of, the tour itself, we can make recommendations, at the end of the day, the committee's going to help us plan it. But yes, we will think about all the community partners that need to be brought in to continue to tell the story. And I agree about making sure we have actual testimony put together and maybe even appearance at the whatever date they finally decide on when they come here. Having a commissioner speak to the work that we do, but having a letter as part of the tour, as part of how we do our advocacy.
Right.
Just one point. And you teased it out, and I think it's an important one. I don't think it's as idle a conversation as you're making. You heard it, and that is, there is a clawback that's being talked about pretty seriously on that fifty-thirty-twenty. And as we show projects, whoever does that, start showing state facilities, that'll be a good impetus for them to say, see, that's why we need part of your thirty percent. So I don't know, I mean, you're the expert, but I don't know how you're going to phrase that, but we're also asking for, if they have vehicle mile travel or whatever, we'd get some percentage of that. They're also apt to come back and say, look at all the lane miles we have in Washington County. What was it, eighteen, twenty percent? Give us back some of that thirty percent. So they're pretty serious about not having funds and trying to look, as we look up, they're looking down. And so I know you're taking that all into account, but it's a pretty serious problem. And at some point, this board may want to say, fifty, thirty, twenty, we don't mess with. There's no clawback for specific projects, or like Farmington you mentioned, or TV Highway. Those are their projects, we know that. They could come back and say, that's precisely why we want the funds, so.
So thank you, Commissioner Rogers, for your leadership. I agree with you. This isn't the first time there's been the conversation about clawing back the thirty percent and the twenty percent of the distribution to cities and counties. And it's not acceptable. And I think we need to paint the picture. If you take the thirty percent away, this is what will clearly happen in Washington County. You know, we have to paint that picture to them in stark terms. And I'm not afraid of us including it in a letter to the Washington County delegation as well as to the committee members. In addition, I'm totally open-minded about the state adding an excise tax, or call it a fee if you want, on every vehicle sale. Because we have to increase funding directed towards transportation improvements. And that includes all vehicle types. Additionally, for tires, too, if not all tires. My electric car has tires that cause wear and tear. They're not the studded snow tires that cause more wear and tear. But we've got to put, we have to put measures in place. No one is going to swoop in and save the state of Oregon.
I think as we go back as a staff and look at what possible projects, taking into consideration your points, Commissioner Rogers, and about how much we've invested and showing off why we need to continue those resources, we will put that lens on it as we make suggestions up to AOC and getting that information into the Joint Legislative Committee.
I would like our staff to provide that picture to the full board of what that thirty percent goes to. So that, you know, with that stark picture of, if it goes away, what happens over the first five years, right? So that, and so I don't know if this is accomplished through just a memo with more pictures of potholes or whatever, you know, degraded pavement, you name it. Or if we actually need to spend ten minutes on it, have, or fifteen, have staff show us in a work session. I don't know the answer to that, but I think we're going to have to own the education process.
We'll work with leadership to bring that back in what format makes sense.
It might be appropriate at some point to draw the line in the sand. I mean, to me, that's a line in the sand. And letter, I like. The other thing you might want to incorporate at some point, there's a lot of misstep money that went on the state highway system. I don't think a lot of people understand that. We were spending a lot of money that we didn't ask for anything back. It was approving the system for everybody, so they need to understand we have contributed.
Thank you very much for that. We are hoping that 2025 is the year that the political will results in some structural change. Doesn't negatively impact our ability to serve our residents.
So we have a few more slides to get through, so let's keep pressing on.
So just a quick look ahead for the J-PAC upcoming work program. I just want to flag that we do have the policy timeline that includes presentations from stakeholders that are leading up to the first legislative priority development discussion on July eighteenth. These discussions will likely focus on policy outcomes versus specific projects, as we've highlighted. As in 2017, J-PAC's goal is to have a unified regional representation in support of the legislative recommendation that will be put forth on November twenty-first. On the next slide, just want to also touch bases on what's happening with the Association of Oregon Counties. They are also advancing their interim work on the transportation package, which will include several AOC and LOC ad hoc summits on transportation, yet to be scheduled. The counties are unified in our position, again, that the local portion of state shared revenues must be maintained and extended to new revenue streams, and that local governments, frankly, must retain the ability to adopt local revenues that parallel state revenues, such as a gas tax. And last slide from me. Now, in regards to the 2025 transportation package policy questions and your adopted transportation policy framework, we've organized three questions to help guide our interim work. Regarding question number one, asking what programs are priorities we should advocate for, we've outlined four areas of your consideration. And with that, I will conclude, so you can guide additional conversation, Chair Harrington.
Can we go back to Slide thirteen first?
Of course.
What role are you, Jerry, Pam, and Nefisa playing in this?
At this point, I just passed a note to Jerry and confirmed that he's on the Transportation Committee for AOC. The Steering Committee for Transportation and Community Development, I don't see myself reflected there, except down the Legislative Committee and on the board, Chair. But I also am looking toward our District Eight meeting in September and wondering if that's a place that we can have a focus as well. Does that answer your question?
So June seventeenth and eighteenth for us isn't practicable?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, the seventeenth, okay, that's a Monday, but Tuesday, the eighteenth, is just not doable. So it's like, okay, thanks, AOC, for shooting us in the foot. So, you know, I appreciate that Commissioner Willie is on the Transportation and Community Development Steering Committee, and that's important. You know, I think the region, one act, as he's let us know, they've chosen to increase the amount of time they spend in meetings. It's like, towards what end? You know, you're just going to spend more time talking amongst yourselves, but that's not going to effectuate any change at the state. The efforts at the state legislature is what's really necessary. And I'm really diving down into this because this is a space, I don't know how Commissioner Rogers has endured the transportation space for four decades. You know, I was in this space as a Metro Councilor for twelve years before being here as Chair, and been there, done that. This will be at least the third major state legislative package on transportation. And I'm grateful for having other colleagues to serve in the additional forums. But if AOC seriously thinks that we're going to be spending time on transportation at a legislative retreat, then they need to get their act together and make sure that they can attract the fuller set of people. I mean, they already changed the date to accommodate northeastern Oregon counties. But their alternative is not acceptable. So, but you've heard me say that, what, three times in these meetings, so?
And to chime in on the part about, I've been around the meetings and AOC-related. I've been participating in the AOC slash LOC summit on transportation. It was a really good discussions, and I think people are really serious about demanding different ask than 2017, so that's been a really good discussion.
How many of those summits have happened in the past, and how many are projected to happen into the future?
I believe they've had two so far. And I have been in communication with Mallory, just double checking my texts. They haven't decided how many more they're going to have through the rest of this year. They're putting that schedule together. And I don't know if they talked about it, the Transportation and Community Development Steering Committee on Friday.
That's where the big work happens.
And we have sent the word back about the frustration with the moving of the calendars for purposes of adopting the legislative agenda. They expect that to happen between one and three on the eighteenth. But that doesn't help us because you're still meeting at that time.
Okay, well, then let's go to Slide fourteen. So staff has presented this slide. Commissioners, any feedback? There are three different questions. Okay, well, nobody else has any feedback, so I'll give you mine. Under what programs or priorities should we advocate for? The first bullet, absolutely. The second one, allowing counties/cities to adopt locally, absolutely. The third one, the latter part, that should be dispersed through the region through programs such as great streets. We got to get the orphan highway resolution in there.
That is what great streets is now, orphan highways are now known as great streets.
That's a stretch. That's a real stretch.
The intention is to make great street.
That's lipstick on a pig.
Fair enough.
It's not a criticism of our team.
Yeah, no, that's, you know, we didn't adopt that language.
Are there specific projects we could advocate for? I think we've already talked about that. What are my concerns related to the 2025 funding package discussions? The state legislature just can't say, well, sorry, you can't pit transportation against education versus money to keep state prisons and, you know, the public safety system going. It's like, stop pushing this problem down to us, you know? Hence the comments that I've already shared about, you got to grow the pie of revenue, folks. Because nobody's going to swoop in and save Oregon. Now, I am totally bored with the transportation space. It's important, but this is where I'm grateful that I'm one of five. So I will show up as needed, I will weigh in as needed. But been there, done that, it's a really long game. So that's it. So I think we're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. Thank you for asking and engaging. Terrific, well, we are on schedule, so we'll take a break at this juncture for fifteen minutes and reconvene at ten forty-five. Thank you. Thank you. Ever been in rain that hard?
Yeah.
All right, welcome back, Commissioners, and back to Chair Harrington.
Thank you very much, Clerk Moss. Agenda format here, I think we will need at most, or probably the 45 minutes for board and leadership communication. But Ms. Angie let me know that staff would be available to, instead of taking the lunch break then, just continuing on the code compliance topic. So that would be another hour, so that way we could be done potentially at 12:30 for the rest of the day. Is everybody open to that? Okay, terrific, that's what we'll do. Thank you, Ms. Angie. So we're going to go right into board and leadership communication. Who would like to start? Yep, everybody's waking up. Board and leadership communication, and if leadership is at the ready before we are, we can start there. Okay, Diane, how about you?
Good morning, Department of Water Services and Chair Harrington. I don't really have anything to report, we're just so busy right now with budget and obviously the RNG contract.
Terrific, thank you. Ms. Angie, or I guess, should I go to legal first and do it totally opposite?
Sure.
There you go. Thank you, Courtney Duke-Dreason, for standing in for county council while he's on vacation this week. What you got for us?
It's my pleasure, and that, that was just essentially going to say it's a pleasure to be here, sitting in for Mr. Anderson, who will be back Monday, the fifteenth, which means you will also see me on Friday at the Joint Board of Commission meeting with the Fair Board.
Thank you for reminding me.
Yes, and it's actually, I think, a good, a good thing in this case, because I also serve as General Counsel for the Fair. So it'll, it's good timing, as we are already starting to do early ramp up for the Fair. I'm already starting to see contracts for like 4H judges and entertainers. And we're also starting to look at making sure all our policies and procedures for the Fair are updated and correct and accurate. So I will see you Friday and at your disposal for the rest of the week, should you need anything.
Ms. Angie? Good morning, Board. I almost said afternoon, because we are in the midst of. Sorry, my watch is talking to me too. Reminding me that it is morning. We, here at Washington County, are also in the midst of finalizing the proposed budget. Draw your attention to an email that I sent to all staff and your Board this morning during your board meeting. So you have not read it yet, Chair Harrington, if you've been paying attention to the board meeting. So. Are going to be budgeting for 4.1% COLA for employees. We are not proposing any furloughs or any reduced hours in this proposed budget. And we continue to try to keep our workforce intact. I will be talking with you each more individually as we continue to frame up the proposed budget. One of the messages that you will hear from me is, it's really the tale of two counties. We have some funds that we're seeing adequate, I'll call it adequate, revenues, such as our SHS. We've received more funding within housing services. And then our general fund continues to be strained and really challenges to meet just our mandated and core services. So that'll be a theme through the budget message. I'd also like to draw your attention to an email that I sent to your Board last week, which included the strategic plan update materials for your board action on April 23rd. We're really looking forward to your board discussion and potential action to approve the strategic plan and just seeing if you had any input on those materials now. If you don't have any input now, always feel free to reach out. If you don't have any input now, always feel free to reach out to me. Tomorrow morning I will be leaving for Boston and returning on Saturday. And this is ICMA-related travel. It will be for conference that is related to best practices in AI. So I look forward to also bringing that, not only representing ICMA, but there will be benefits bringing back to the county with that learning as well. During that time, Erin Calvert will be serving as acting. And that concludes my update.
Well, on the strategic plan update information that you sent, it just seems like my inbox has been slammed. So just to reassure you that, no, I haven't looked at it yet, but luckily it's only April ninth.
Just flagging.
But yeah, feel free to, please do flag it again at leadership communication next week, that'll be great. Okay, over to board members.
I'll go next. Last week I had the opportunity to participate Oregon walks, organize the walk with neighbors, some school staff representative, Representative McLean's office and Senator Campo's office, as well as Senator herself being there. And then with Washington County, and the purpose and the goal of this walk was to just not only, I feel like maybe this is an idea for you all, Erin Doyle and the team that were just speaking earlier. I think the goal this year is to make sure people, especially decision-makers have, go through the experience of near-death experience with these roads to really make changes. And it was good to have decision-makers see the challenges the neighbors experienced with their road, Mill Hill Road. And the concern was first raised by the neighbors, and they organized and mobilized themselves to get everyone to be aware of. And that's how both offices, including Washington County, we were there, as well as Oregon walks and street routes getting involved. So, good, good walk, thank you to Oregon walks for their organized effort. And thanks to the neighbors who spoke up and raised this issue, and we continue to be with you on this problem-solving issue. And then the other event I participated was last week, as you all are aware, we did the public health proclamation last week. Therefore, the team of Washington County organized the Public Health Week event with community members. They had over a hundred people in the room, it was very well organized, very well attended, good discussions, and a lot of good efforts that were awarded and good community. With that, done.
Great.
Roy, you want to go? Not a lot to say, it flips us twenty-four hours a day for me nowadays. See just a little bit of light, so had a lot of hours. The only thing interesting I had a chance to participate in was the, uh, Perry Lanahan did a little presentation at WVA on her and the city's efforts in regard to that annexation. And I thought it was very classy to say thank you to the county and what we had done and the efforts that we put on their behalf. She appreciated the joint effort and felt a bit perplexed like we all are. And Tanya, I hope on your AI session, take two things to this, I've always been fearful as public officials, with broadcast, just like we're broadcast now, so much that we say and do. It's so easy to have us say and do anything that anyone wants to in terms of AI. I've always wondered what the, I guess, response will be from a lot of folks to somewhat protect us and you as well. I mean, that would be all your staff as well, because anybody who takes a few of our clips and listens to our voice have us say some pretty interesting things, so it'd be a very interesting topic. So, anyway, that's all I have.
Yeah, AOC had a breakout session, I think I reported on that at their, or not AOC, Nico. And it was for interesting, and so I'll be interested to see what information you come back. I know that, Roy, the software companies are the big guys, the Microsofts and all of that are gonna be held accountable for protecting us a little bit as much as they possibly can, so anyway. So last week I attended the Westside Pitch Competition, I think I told you about that last week. So I just hadn't made some opening remarks, and then I had to go to another meeting. But this is where the entrepreneurial folks here in Oregon, if they have an idea, they begin to put together a business structure and a business plan and a marketing plan and all those kinds of things, and they make the pitch, because there's some money available to help them with some of their startups. So that's always interesting to hear that part. Like I said, unfortunately I couldn't this year, but I listened to it last year. It's very creative what they come up with. Last Friday was the AOC Transportation and Community Development Steering Committee. So we had ODOT, like I said, we had ODOT. That was presented by Julie Brown, who's the chair of the OTC. I had never heard her before, she kind of stumbled through the presentation a little bit, so it was good that I'd already heard the presentation at the Region One Act Monday, the Monday before that. But it was interesting to hear that again and hear the conversation and the comments. We continue to have our forestry small table meetings. And there's nothing that I can report out on this right now, except we're still working on the draft presentation to the governor. And the presentation that we're gonna make to the fifteen trust counties. So that's coming up hopefully in the next few weeks, I don't know, we don't have a date for that yet. Met with State Senator Suzanne Weber last night out in North Plains. She had a kind of an appointment, it was, so it wasn't a public event, but it was an appointment, assigned thing. So it was good to talk to her, we talked about the transportation package that's coming in twenty-five and forestry that impacts her in Telemunca. So it was good to talk to her, and we're on the same page with her on a number of things. I made the pitch about our funding for the courthouse. And she agreed, she said Telemunca has a courthouse need as well. So, you know, we'll see if we can get that. And then lastly was HOPST opener Friday night. Nafisa and I represented the commissioner there, can I have my gloves back? I gave him my gloves, because his hands was, I know you gave it to somebody to give to me, and I don't know where that loop is, so I'm holding you responsible, Nafisa.
What happens when you borrow things you're supposed to return?
I did, apparently I gave it to the wrong person.
Who'd you give it to?
Noted. I borrowed from Jerry, and then your friends are gonna see you the next day, and we were talking, and I said, oh, deliver this, please, this important package.
Responsibility for some, to somebody else, sorry.
That's okay, we'll fact. We'll track that down. They were not all that expensive, a couple hundred bucks or something, you know.
Okay, Chair Harrington, could you please donate?
Okay, it's still my nickel.
You're involved in this conversation, so Catherine will give it to you.
A couple hundred bucks? Oh, yeah.
She's willing to speak for somebody else.
Good luck with that.
Good luck with that.
Okay, 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 okay. I'm going to Community Action Kaleidoscope tomorrow night. Anybody else going to that? Okay, yeah.
I think I am.
I'll be attending, okay, I'll see you there if that's what you're gonna, bring my gloves. This week is also Colpak and Northwest Act on Thursday. And on, and then our joint meeting, all of us are joint meeting on Friday with the fair board. And on Saturday, it's Pig Way In Day at the county. So that's where I'll be at eight.
If you're looking for squeals of fun, that is the place.
Exactly, right. That's right. And the San Jose Trail, I should mention, the San Jose Trail Foundation is having an event in a couple of weeks, and I will send you an email invite to that, it's in Portland. So anyway, I'll let you know about that.
We have no shortage of events that we can go to.
Yeah, so anyway, that's all I got, thanks.
Thank you.
I'll go next. No, it won't be, it won't be nearly as entertaining as the two of you, so.
I didn't borrow anything.
I am, tomorrow and part of the day on Thursday, I will be out of the office having a minor surgical procedure, and I'll be back, and we will, I will be attending the Opel grand opening with the speaking role there on Thursday afternoon. Thursday evening, I will be attending the cab meeting. And Chair Harrington, I took a cut out of our minutes about the schedule for the con plan, for the consolidated.
Consolidated plan?
Because you've asked several times. I have, I'll send that clip to you, but it's.
I don't think I get the mailings anymore, and they used to share the different reports. And so that's how I would learn more about the county. But I think that plan and the report should be coming to us in work session this year.
It's the, the public hearing is on, first of all, our draft goals and objectives are gonna be in August of this year. There'll be a public hearing on the twenty-fifth, it gets approval on February twenty-five, and then it goes to HUD May twenty-five.
So will some of the reports that the consolidated plan is built on, will that be coming to order or will be shared?
I will make sure that.
That's awesome, so it's valuable information.
Well, and you have asked, and I thought, okay, I was reading my packet, and I thought, okay.
Hopefully my mind will settle up.
Well, we'll figure out.
Yeah.
But anyway, it's on my radar to get to all of us.
Cool.
And I am celebrating personally because I finished my SEI form and got that. I just want to make public statement on that.
It's about ninety seconds.
Yeah, well, I know, but I'm always at the last minute on that one. So then in review now, on Monday, I attended the DPSSST, the training for our, for our public safety group. There was a listening session, I attended that, got some really interesting information. Brent Bartlett joined me there, and thank you for getting me to the right place, because when it says sheriff, when it says training room, I go to this location, and I didn't, I went to the wrong one. But I got there, and it was very interesting, I had an opportunity to meet the executive, he's not the executive director, he's the, I'll look and see what his name is. But he was very interested and very complimentary about the work that we're doing in Washington County. And there is clearly a relationship that Sheriff Massey had with that, with that group. And it was, it was good to see, and questions were good to listen to. I also attended the AOC board meeting, and that was to review Gina Nichols' performance. That went well, they did a good job on that review process, and I was very supportive of where we ended up there. And then on, last week, I attended with Chair Harrington the presentation of the ten thousand dollar check from PGE Foundation to our libraries to purchase digital materials for our juvenile collection. It was for children's books, and it was, it was a great opportunity. PGE was there in large part. This occurred because of the amount of issue we had in our, in our entire county from the storm. And that's what precipitated this discussion. But we were very pleased to accept the ten thousand dollars, and they did a good job there. Also, as I promised last week, I am giving each of you some tulips. And I bought those at the Tulip Festival I attended on several days this weekend, which is the fundraiser in support of the West Slope Library, it's put on by the Friends of West Slope Library. So they are.
Do you hand them out when we get this?
Yeah, I just wanted to show you what's here and how beautiful they are. So, and it's a very happy thing to do, so please pick them up. And there's, these are multipurpose doggy bags, these go around the base of the tulips festival. And you can use it with your dog afterwards.
Yeah, I'm going back to give to you, you can use with your dog. So I can reuse it for that.
So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Alrighty, I have a few things to contribute. First, I want to say thank you to all of our staff across both agencies for the constituent reports and the follow-up. I read that report diligently every week, because I learn a lot. And I also want to make sure I'm on the journey of how our customer, our constituent interactions are going. But I really want to say that not only is it good follow-up, but also it's always done in a very customer-oriented, positive fashion. And some of the emails are a little hard to digest on occasion, and I'm always impressed by staff. So just the recent report reminded me to make sure, if I haven't said it before, to say it. On LUT Friday Facts, I see the need to follow up with you on the city of Beaverton. I think based upon my meeting with Mayor Rosener from Sherwood, we should be, or hopefully are well-positioned with regard to their arterials and collectors in their UGB expansion. And we know we're still working through the tiger complication. Friday, Ms. Angie and I had a check-in with the CEO of PGE. We spent a lot of time talking about the agency partnership and the January storm. We got to a good place during the course of the meeting, and been a lot of emails of follow-up, so part of why I've had to dig out my email box. Lastly, I want to bring to life some status on the Metro Regional Housing Stakeholder Advisory Table. We did have meeting number three last Wednesday, where they asked the committee about solutions for increasing the availability of affordable housing. I did contribute early on in that conversation, and it was acknowledged that it's a little difficult to go through that exercise when I know that all three counties will be needing all, if not the majority, of those funds. So that was very much noted and echoed by the folks in the room. I do want to give credit where credit is due. I think at that meeting at least, Metro has improved their language and phraseology. Some of you may have seen a article that was posted in at least the Willamette Week about the governor having a press conversation touching on these, our supportive housing service efforts. I feel that she is incorrectly positioning the counties. And also there was incorrect information as she was quoted. I have not had an individual meeting with the governor, so. I did have a meeting yesterday with Metro CFO Brian Kennedy, and I followed up with Council President Peterson this morning with regard to the Metro staff needing information from our county staffs about our five-year programs looking ahead. And we very clearly have some work needing to be done in the partnership to make sure information needs are shared up and down our own vertical silos or chains, as well as across the three. So our staff is doing a terrific job, in my opinion, of getting not only the Washington County information together, but also working with the other two counties so that the Metro Council audience, the Metro staff audience, and the Stakeholder Advisory Table audience will have information from all. and the Stakeholder Advisory Table audience will have information from all three counties that is speaking a similar language through the phraseology that is used. And our staff will make sure to get you that information in advance so that if there's any press coverage, you'll be in the know. So all of that is still very much work in progress. That's all I think I've got for now, so. Great, that means we're ahead of schedule. So thank you, staff, for being at the ready to start early. Really appreciate it. So we're going to dive into the code compliance topic. We have many different players, so please just feel free to come on up to the table.
Hey, good morning, Chair Harrington and Board. It's still morning. I'm, for the record, Marnie Kyle, I'm one of the ACAs. And I've been involved in this project, I could say, for 10 years because I remember meeting with LUT when CIA was the DCA and convening us to work on improving cross-departmental coordination. But today, we're not going to take you through a 10-year journey. We're just going to take you through the recent journey that both LUT, the Sheriff's Office, and HHS has been involved in to really improve how we work as a one-Washington County approach to code enforcement. Because we've been pretty siloed, although we've been really working at a staff level to, to work past that and make this more user-friendly for folks that don't know where the complaint needs to go. And we have a relatively good system now for accepting complaints and making sure it gets to the right place. But we're here today to provide you with information. We recently hired Matrix as a consultant to look at the entire system and make some recommendations. We've, we've shared with you our charter, which was shared with you, I believe, March of last year. And also the, their, their report that staff will be walking through a bit today. There are still chunks and pieces that we need to work on. And the, the work group steering committee will continue to work on some of those. So an example is we haven't tackled financing yet. And you'll see some sections around financing in the report. But right now, we're really here to just share some of the, some of the recommendations and some that we feel like we may be able to, they're low-hanging fruit that we can move forward with. Our team today is Marissa Mantle and Erin Wardell. But it's a much larger team that's been working with the consultants on this. So I'm with that, going to turn it over. Oh, so I've kind of gone over the purpose of today. And then we do have some policy questions for the board to think about as we, as we move through the presentation today, so we can go to the next. Okay, so today, we're interested in to know, does the board have input or more questions about the work to date and the report? And then does the board support staff implementing some of the recommendations in the consultant report and bringing further action to the board when potential solutions are found that involve board policy or changes to the system that we have today? And with that, I think I'm turning it over to Marissa Mantle, who will go through some of the recent history and get us kicked off.
Thank you, Marnie. Good morning, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners, Marissa Mantle with Health and Human Services. And so Marnie did a good job kicking us off, just acknowledging that there's really been a longstanding desire from this board and prior boards and staff to really improve our code compliance, our customer service, our program effectiveness and efficiencies. We know that our current process can be confusing to community members since we have three different departments that respond to complaints. And we all have different processes and how we respond and what we do and how we follow up. So dating back to, just wanting to give you a brief timeline here, how did we get here today? Because we know it has been a while since we talked to you about code compliance. So back in June of 2019, there were some pretty comprehensive one-on-ones that staff provided to all board members. So these were pretty lengthy briefings, a full PowerPoint going over each department, what each department did and their processes. And then we kind of had this gap in terms of coming to you and talking about code compliance because COVID hit. So in March of 2020, of course, we had our first case that really redeployed staff and we didn't reconvene as a work group to really be strategic about code compliance until about fall of 2021. So fall of 2021, we had a cross-departmental work group, as Marnie already noted. It's Health and Human Services, Land Use and Transportation, and the Sheriff's Office. And we really went back to the question of how is our current code enforcement process and system working? Is it meeting the needs of the community members? Again, we know there's confusion and we wanted to be able to clear that up and look at improvements and efficiencies. So what happened is staff determined that really we needed to hire a consultant to do this thorough assessment and come back with recommendations. Staff had limited capacity and resources to do this work on their own because we didn't have a ton of staff devoted to code compliance and we still don't. So we resulted in that recommendation to hire a consultant. So moving ahead to April of 2022, this steering committee developed a project charter that Marnie already mentioned. It was shared, it was approved by executive leadership and then shared with your board. In, in a memo to your board that we sent in April of 2023, 2022, the date is March, but we sent it to you in April, really did a summary of kind of what the issues were and what staff were hoping next steps would be. And again, that notification that we would be going out for RFP. So we worked on what that RFP would be and what it would entail. And we launched it in the fall of 2022. We reviewed the proposals, staff engagement, again, a one-Washington County approach across all three departments, interviewed our top consultants and landed on Matrix Consulting Group, whose report you have as part of the board packet. Matrix Consulting spent pretty much the majority of last year working through the assessment process and coming back to us. And we worked collaboratively with them every step of the way. And then they send us that final project report in December of last year. And then, starting in January of this year, staff reviewed our, the findings that they had and worked towards prioritizing what recommendations we thought were feasible and what ones we'd want to maybe look at in the future. And Erin will go over that later in the presentation. Wanting to kind of do some ground setting, what is our current state of code compliance? Code compliance covers all of the unincorporated areas, so urban and rural unincorporated. We're not talking about incorporated urban areas. Three departments, again, I've mentioned that a few times, lots of different work groups. And you see just a variety of different programs that are really handling code compliance. So in LUT, they're responding to things such as land use violations, excess vehicles, fence height setbacks, things such as abandoned and dangerous buildings, buildings without permits, electrical or plumbing without permits, dead animals in the road, potholes, et cetera. Then you have HHS, solid waste. They're looking at things like the accumulation of waste materials, the overgrown grass, things that could present a fire hazard, also noise complaints that happen during daytime hours. Also, under environmental health, they're looking at septic and sewage issues. And then you have the Sheriff's Department and they're focusing on things like chronic noise nuisances. They also respond to noise nuisances after hours and then also parking issues. So looking at this, it's easy to understand why community members would be confused. So if they want to call and complain about a noise issue, are they calling HHS? Are they calling the Sheriff's Office? If they're, want to call and complain about a dead animal on the road, they might think they should call Animal Services and HHS. But no, they're really looking at land use and transportation. You think about some of our more complicated scenarios we've got with over the last few years. The Sellers Road property, we have, you know, violations that are crossing all three departments. So it is very confusing for community members and for us as staff to help support them throughout the process. So the assessment, and the assessment that we had Matrix do was really to look at our existing code compliance processes and resources. We wanted to make recommendations for improvements that would result in the following. So really preventing violations, ideally, they don't happen, right? So can we do better education to help community members understand and other programming? A clear process, this is a really key component. We want community members to know what is the process to get their concerns addressed? Who are the right staff to go to? How do they go to them without them having to understand our very complex and large organization? We want our compliance process to be in line with our county's equity priorities. We know that our current process is complaint-driven. And research tells us that that creates a disparate level of code complaints. So people that know how to use the system, that know who to talk to, they're the ones that often are lodging those complaints, whereas other folks don't have that same access and we're not getting good data on really what the key issues are out there when it's a complaint-driven approach. Wanting that one-Washington County approach to code compliance, so again, working together collaboratively across all departments. And then really what tools are the best tools that we could use for code-compliant staff to be more effective in addressing and resolving their violations? We have a Sella that staff are using currently and we've improved our processes, but there's still more room for improvement. So those were the goals in terms of actual process. So the core project team, again, included staff from all three of our departments. This team worked together to select that consultant who we already mentioned. And then they also met consistently with that consultant throughout last year to help guide the project. So really helping ensure that they met these deliverables, that they did the assessment, the actual process assessment, but that they also interviewed key staff. We offered interviews to your board, so we had two commissioners participate and then other stakeholders as well. They did community engagement meetings and surveys. They did a jurisdictional comparative assessment. And for any members of the public watching, all of this information and detail is in the agenda packet. There's a lengthy report from the consultant that goes through each and every aspect here. We're not going to go through that today, just due to time constraints, but wanting folks to know that that's all available. Best management practices, techniques, and that equity analysis that we wanted to prioritize. And then we, of course, worked with them to make sure they met the deliverable of the project and gave us that final report. So key assessment findings and issues, and Erin will go through in more depth the recommendations when I turn it over to her. But these key assessment findings would be slightly higher rate of complaints in equity-focused areas, a limited focus on prevention and education, which we know, and I would identify that that really is staff capacity and resources that we have limited. Public information and education, so how we're doing the complaint intake and tracking, helping the public understand that. And then the adjudication processes, so when we're actually adjudicating some of these compliance activities, they haven't been consistent from one department to another or one issue to another. And that can be confusing for the public and for staff. The adjudication process can be limiting in terms of options to ensure compliance. So there could be improvements we'd make there. And then our financial assistance program should be provided for residents that have limited financial capacity to.
Unincorporated residents.
Thank you, Chair, yes, unincorporated residents. Financial assistance for unincorporated residents to help address those violations. And then our technology could be utilized more effectively to manage our processes and also our workload. So obviously quite a bit of good information here in terms of how we can do better. Want to briefly talk about the community engagement survey. So again, this work was done last year. The survey was open from May 1st to July 4th of 2023. We promoted it on our county's social media platforms, including Twitter and Facebook. And then we also tabled at the Aloha's Farmers Market. So we actually had our staff and Matrix Consulting co-located at that Farmers Market. They distributed flyers that had a QR code. So people could easily scan that QR code and go straight to the survey and then also the direct survey link. And that survey was distributed in both English and Spanish. And they also presented at the Aloha Business Association and shared the flyers and the survey there as well. So altogether, we had 190 total respondents. Six of those responses were in Spanish, the rest were in English. So moving next into recommendations, I believe this is when I'm turning it over to you, Erin. Thank you. My name is Erin Wardell, I'm the Planning and Development Services Manager in the Department of Land Use and Transportation. And I'm going to cover the recommendations that came out of our consultant's assessment. So as Mira said, the entire report is available in the packet. The consultant grouped their recommendations into these five topic areas. So we have equity and inclusion, organization staffing, process, technology, and communication. Staff then did an exercise of looking through these recommendations and trying to prioritize them based on whether we could implement them quickly using our existing resources, whether it would be a little bit more time-staff-intensive, budget-intensive, or whether we'd require major budget reallocation, additional positions, reorganizations, things like that. So you'll see the recommendations ranked one, two, and three, and that's what that means. Starting out with the equity and inclusion recommendations. The first of these and one that we think we can implement fairly quickly is to continue to monitor and analyze our submitted complaints. We already have the data and we can certainly do a better job of keeping track of that across the three departments and summarizing it and tracking any trends that we're seeing over time. So that's something we think we can do relatively quickly. There's two other recommendations, though, that we think are a little bit more intensive. And that would be to develop a more detailed analysis to track future data and have a better understanding of how the complaints are dispersed and also identify if there's possible landlord tenant and other tricky issues involved. But this would involve reframing how we collect that data and how we do it. Number three would be a major investment of staff time and some reorganization. And that would be to concentrate any resources in our equity-focused areas. And so that would involve additional education and outreach for code-related issues and possibly mitigation assistance, again, for those unincorporated Washington County residents and businesses who would like to comply with the code but lack the resources to do so. For the organization and staffing recommendations, we have a few that we think we can implement fairly quickly. First would be to assign a single county council staff person to assist with the legal aspects of code enforcement. Right now, it's somewhat distributed among a few different staff in county councils' offices. And so this would make one point of contact for the various departments. We also would like to formalize our existing cross-departmental code compliance working group in order to continue our communications between the departments and identify which of these various recommendations we can implement and to provide leadership on some of our more complex code compliance cases that cross the three departments. Then we have some more complicated recommendations. The first being to centralize our complaint intake and adjudication and continue our department-specific case investigations. So this is sort of a hybrid centralized approach where we are centralizing the complaint intake. This would probably involve creating a new staff position, who would be the coordinator of this program. But then the departments would still deal with their department-specific code compliance. So you'll see more of this discussed in the report. And then that third recommend, or the fourth recommendation on the point on the slide here is adding that code compliance coordinator staff position in order to implement that third recommendation. So definitely more budget-intensive in order to do that. On the process recommendations, we think it will be a medium level of effort to create a comprehensive county-wide code compliance policy and procedure manual. We do think this would be a really valuable thing to do. It would help with training our staff and it would help with our response to the community. But it's certainly not something we can do particularly quickly. And then three more budget and time-intensive recommendations for cases of non-cooperation and failed assistance to develop a clear decision-making guidelines for staff and how they would pursue these and then create a single adjudication process for these violation types. We could, again, expand our assistance to property owners who are unable to remediate their violations, even though they would like to, they just need some resources in order to do that. And then we could create an abatement fund to address serious health, safety violations, responding to natural disasters, or when the abatement is going to be less costly to us than doing the ultimate enforcement on it.
Unincorporated.
Unincorporated, yes. Communications recommendations, we certainly could do some work on our webpage to make it a little bit easier for the community to understand and to be able to navigate through so that they know who they're supposed to be talking to and which department can assist them. And also just to understand, is the thing that they are concerned about a code violation? Or do they need to go somewhere else entirely? So we think this is something we can accomplish fairly quickly with existing resources. Longer term, we could create a central online information hub that would be a little bit more detailed and provide a little bit more of that information that would be valuable to the community. And then more time and budget-intensive, we could implement a code education program in multiple languages to utilize and utilize multiple communication platforms in order to reach out to our community and business members and focus on how they can comply or avoid code compliance issues. And then finally, technology, unfortunately. And then finally, technology. Unfortunately, there are no easy solutions with technology. Nothing that we think we can implement necessarily very quickly on this. But we certainly could improve our existing software systems to make it easier for our community members to report code complaints. This would also probably make it easier for our staff to process those. We could develop clear and consistent countywide protocols for how we do the complaint intake. And then how we're tracking all of that through our software programs. We could expand our software system training for staff. And we would need to work with county IT and also with our vendor in order to make some of these improvements to our software program. We're using the Acela software database for most of our code compliance work, and that's cross-departmental. And then we could be developing report templates and processes for staff and then for the management team. That would make their side of the processing easier and more consistent across the departments. But none of these are particularly easy. We don't see these necessarily as low hanging fruit. But we think it's really important and we think that these changes could make a lot of impact, both for the community and for staff. So that's a really high level overview of these recommendations. For our next steps. One of the easy to accomplish tasks we identified in the recommendations was to continue that code compliance core project team as an ongoing senior level working group. And we'd continue to focus on our interdepartmental work and our communications. We also would be able to bring work back to the board as we progress with it. And as we're able to identify which of these recommendations we think we can implement. And which fit in with our strategic plan and other county efforts that are happening. And this is an opportunity to continue advancing our one Washington County efforts as we work across three different departments. And finally, we're back to our policy questions. So does the board have any input or questions on the work to date? And does the board support staff implementing some of the recommendations? And bringing forward further actions when solutions are identified?
Do I'll be going last. So commissioners? Any questions on anything?
Is, how many, what's the FTEs? Is, don't we have like one and a half or one and three quarters? And what's the FTE in this?
It's a little bit of a lot of people.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a lot of people. I think it's technically 1.5 FTE in solid waste and recycling and.
We have one FTE in current planning and then a little bit of other staff across.
That, that one that I was thinking of and it's one of them is funded with ARPA money? Am I thinking about the right?
You don't, I don't believe we have any ARPA funds going to code enforcement that I can recall.
I think this is, I think this is a great process that we're going through. And yeah, I'll look forward to hearing how we implement some of these. And it sounds to me like we're going to put and for lack of a better word, code compliance up on kind of the bulletin board of so when somebody's looking for someplace, they would click on that rather than going to the individual departments and trying to find out where that goes.
Incorporated code compliance.
Well, yeah, but I'm just talking about.
Compliance across the county.
But what I was talking about is that there would be a place that somebody could go to find out unincorporated, whatever it is. So is that what we're going to do? We're going to add that to our website kind of directory?
We have it on the website right now, but the information's in a couple of different places. Actually, it's in the main banner. If you go to the webpage right now, it says, "Report a Code Complaint" or something like that at the very top. But it's not necessarily very user friendly. And I think that it depends on the type of complaint someone would like to make as to where they go next. So we'd like to make that an easier user experience.
So you're going to rename it from code compliance? Code compliance to me says nobody's going to go out and make sure that our builders are complying with their with our codes when they're building something. I don't think of code compliance when I'm, want to report a pothole. So I don't know, code compliance doesn't work for me. I don't know that, but anyway.
Currently says code enforcement, right?
We've moved towards saying compliance rather than enforcement. For reasons. And so that has been the terminology we're going with. But I hear what you're saying and how that could be confusing for the community. Again, it's all making sure that we're serving the community and they understand what services we provide and where we provide them.
And where they go.
And I think Commissioner Willia, it's a great question. Thank you. And I think the goal would be that this work group again, would be working in collaboration with obviously our communications experts and CAO. And to look at, okay, how can we improve our website? And so we'd be able to look at some best practices and look at the recommendations from the consultants and then implement them. So we don't have it ready-made, ready to go. That would be some of the work that the work group does.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would agree with where we are. Thank you for doing this work. I, I think that just making sure that we're always looking through that customer lens is the important part. And I just pulled up the website.
Unincorporated.
Yes, you'll understand why. Let me finish, let me, but let me finish what I was going to say. And it should, it should be clear to both an incorporated customer, potential customer and an unincorporated, that whether or not it applies to them. So I'm saying, I keep saying unincorporated. There's a city of Beaverton person could easily go to this website as well. I'm just saying it has, and they have to understand where it doesn't apply to them. But the other piece is when I look at this, I see code enforcement here. And then over on the right side, noise concerns. So I'm going to call, I'm, I'm going to look to noise concerns if I have the rooster that the guy talked about last week, or not necessarily code enforcement. So I think the vernacular is really important here. And it's so easy to slip into how we speak versus how everyone else in unincorporated Washington County speaks. As well as those who are looking to us where we don't provide service from an incorporated area. But this is good work.
I'll go next. Thank you. Great presentation, Steph. I have a, a couple of detailed questions. And I'm looking at Marnie, but any of you can answer. Just happened to land my eye there. The question, first question is, I don't, you, you could point to me if this is an existed materials. But quick look, I couldn't find this. But could you remind me what questions were asked in the survey or the focus group? And then the second part of that first question is, were there questions or requests that came out that were out of scope? From that.
Do you have the question?
I believe the survey should be in one of the appendix on the report, but I'm just looking. While I look for that, I do know what's out of scope, we were very specific to say what's out of scope is incorporated areas. So we were very clear when we interviewed both staff and anyone else. That we're just looking at the unincorporated areas. In terms of the stakeholder, let me see, Appendix B, page 65, it should be in here.
Well, Mira looks for that. I can say, I, I think that the survey primarily focused on whether or not a person had had an experience with Washington County code compliance and what their experience had been.
Okay. I believe it is.
It's starting on page 66. So a question would be, what is your experience with Washington County code compliance? And then it was multiple choice. So questions like, I haven't ever submitted a code compliance complaint. Or I have submitted a code compliance complaint. Or I tried to submit a complaint but was unsuccessful. Or I have received a code enforcement investigation or violation. And then we asked ethnicity and demographic information, a language. And these were optional. People didn't have to complete them if they didn't want to. And then there were different multiple choice questions on if they knew how to submit a complaint. There was, I think, some breakdown information there. Yes. And then satisfaction. So how satisfied they were? Were they satisfied with the level of code compliance services? Do they understand the types of issues that they could report on? So all the questions are in the report and I'm happy, we're happy to set up time to go through that a little more detail if you'd like.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. The, the other question I have is a noise complaint that goes to solid waste versus a noise complaint that goes to sheriff? Could you help me understand the difference between the two?
Sure. So and again.
The other part is why solid waste?
That is an excellent question. There, I, I cannot explain how noise and compliance lands in solid waste, but it has been in that work group for a long time. And how it works is that in unincorporated parts of Washington County, if somebody has a noise complaint. And it's typically things again, like maybe it's a loud blower. Maybe it's a chicken who's, who's making noise. Whatever their, or a car engine that's very loud. Those are typically things that would be submitted to our, our noise complaint procedure. If it's after hours, obviously, solid waste and recycling isn't working nights and weekends. And so they would typically call the sheriff's office for after hours complaints. And then what the, the solid waste and recycling team does is they investigate. So they need, they need data. They need to be able to investigate that report. And they're not able to just take somebody's word for it. They need to be able to interview folks and gather information and follow up. And a lot of it is education. So supporting neighbors in terms of education.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
And if, did you want to add anything else, Marnie, about the history of?
No, I, I think you handled, I mean, different sections of code compliance have rotated before I was here to, you know, more in different departments. So since I've been here, this has been where things have landed. From my experience on the board, towards your question, Commissioner Fai, for these years. Neighborhood noise usually falls under the solid waste experience. Neighbor to neighbor, whereas party houses, more significant. And more rave kind of things. Or what do we call them? Empty houses that are being vandalized tend to be handled by the sheriff's office. Commissioner Rogers, how about you?
Zombie house, you know.
Zombie house, that's a phrase.
Yeah, I've had a few.
My own, I have two. One has to be for the long policy we've had in trying to understand what's an urban service and what's not. And I think we've parsed it out somewhat in a strategic plan. I think it's always been a chicken and egg kind of question. Something we need to address. And I think you've done it. But tell me how you think this strategically flows with our plan to be adopted, I guess, what, two weeks or something like that?
So during the month.
Are we slightly drifting into the municipal service arena that we said should be for cities or not?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Rogers. I, I think that we tried to separate. In, in our charter, you'll see that urban level services is not within the scope of this project. I know it's a gray line, but we really feel that that's a conversation for your board to have amongst yourselves. And so we, we didn't, we didn't really get into, should we be providing more services? Just that we're providing equitable services based on the current direction. I don't know if that helps.
So you believe, and I'll let it drop because I think others might want to pick it up. You, you believe it fits with our strategic plan as to be adopted in a couple of weeks?
I know that isn't what she said. No.
No, that's not, okay. I'm not hearing you right.
Well, I, I don't recall that urban service levels is is specifically part of your strategic plan, but.
So I think it's just out there. I'll tease that up. Yeah.
The other one I had, and it's just, I think you've really done a nice job in terms getting flyers and communication based upon information for different people from, from different backgrounds. And that's what you call equity focus areas. But and it's only me, in a way I read. Equity focus area sounds very discriminatory to me. Sounds like there's these areas because you, there's got these areas of problems. And is there a gentler way or is that the only way you can describe that?
But well, I think we had different layers of looking at equity, whether it was language, whether it was demographics or socioeconomic status. And the, the question that we wanted to ask is, are we supporting the unincorporated and rural areas equitably? And questions like, are poor people reported more often? Or are we only responding to the people that really have means and understand how to report compliance concerns? So I, I think, you know, we can always look at our language. But that, that's kind of what we were trying to suss out and what we're trying to monitor.
With material. I just thought it would be equity focused, you know, you're doing equity focused needs. Not necessarily an area, you're not identifying a specific area like that block and that area. So that's what I think you intended.
Yes. Yeah, it's, it's a little broader than blocks. And you know, as you layer on the different looks, it, there's.
I'm just reacting to the area. Area. So, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to answer your question, Commissioner Rogers, no, our providing the service to the large extent of urban unincorporated Washington County is not in line with the current strategic plan, nor with the strategic plan update we're about to adopt. We're very clear, we don't want to be providing city level services and be in competition with cities. But what Marnie and these slides speak to when it talks about current staff and current resources. It's taken me a bit of effort to get the clarity for this. But this is countywide funding that we are expending in these urban unincorporated and unincorporated rural areas. Now, county governments are responsible for rural areas. Okay, it is unusual for a county government to have the extent of UUAs that we have. So I did get verification from Mr. Munn that the lottery funds that are being used to fund some of this effort are countywide resources. So we as elected leaders have to be the adult in the room. We can't have it both ways anymore. We've been in difficult circumstances and have been honest, open and transparent with our community as well as our local government partners in cities that we're hurting in funding our standard county services with countywide revenues. So this is why we're in a position where we can't just maintain the status quo with the resources we've been providing. Because we have to look under every single one of those resources, like picking up a rock. If it's countywide resource, is it going to countywide service? Okay, so we are competing with our cities in providing this service. So for example, it, it comes out on slide 11. Where under the first recommendations, and it took me a while to understand the numbers, one, two, and three. Because the first slides, it was number one, two, three for that category, but it's priority one, priority two, priority three. Can be implemented quickly with existing staff and resources. So with existing staff and existing countywide money. So that's a policy decision that we get to make and need to make. And that's not listed in the next steps. So I would change your next step slide. Because we have to have the conversation about our direction and having agreement as a board on that. Because currently, if we proceed down this path, we would be in conflict with that strategic plan we're about to update. So what I put under get our board direction agreement is three things. A, problem definition. What are we trying to solve? B, our direction on this. And C, it sounds like some of these recommendations, if we choose to continue down this path with the very limited countywide resources. To me, a bunch of these recommendations seemed like just management. And I don't want to be weighing in on how management could be making improvements versus policy choices. and I don't want to be weighing in on how management could be making improvements versus policy choices or additional resources. So I have verified that these are countywide resources being used for unincorporated areas. And I think we have to decide what we're going to do about that. And this is, does the board really want to deviate countywide resources away from the problem that we have and that Ms. Angie and her staff have been managing incredibly to give us a balanced budget? I mean, we're cutting countywide services because we are deviating other funds. So I think it's a longer conversation perhaps than just today. We could try and pull it off if you'd like. But I think my point is I've put in the effort with this, right? I asked for clarity, improvements to this information, to tell the story. So that's why I pick up on every single place it talks about residents. It's residents in the unincorporated areas, right? Everywhere it talks about resources, being clear about that. And we all have to put our thinking caps on and have the adult conversation about, are we going to continue to be in competition with our cities? Are we going to continue to take countywide resources, financial resources, invested in both staff as well as in programs that could continue to be used for intellectual disabilities, public safety, you know, broad health and human services, housing services? So I know I'm ready for the conversation today because I know where I stand. But it also means if we're deciding to invest in programs that don't follow our strategic plan, then I'm not going to adopt a strategic plan. That, I mean, it's just, that makes no sense.
I, first of all, I really appreciate the dissection here and the fact that we're, this is important work to do, and it's important for our constituents, it's important for the cities, it's important for us. I don't understand the magnitude in dollars here.
It's all in our budget. So I went and searched.
You found.
And it's like 2 point X, like 2.2 or 2.8 million dollars.
Thank you.
Do you know how many FTE that is?
Sorry, I just want to clarify, are you specifically talking about the lottery funds that are going to code enforcement or?
So I got my information from Greg Munn, so I'm not going to debate it here.
I was just asking for a broad question.
Yeah, we should come back to this conversation. I agree with the chair, it's a bigger conversation than just what's up here.
Well, I think we also have to have the, we have to know when and how we're having that conversation in light of the budget coming up here, so.
Well, all you have to do is think about the budget we had last year, right? And all the decisions we made about what we're going to stop doing.
Right. Through the amendments that you brought forward, is that?
No, that's, oh, the budget cuts that.
Oh, you're talking about, okay, the generalized budget cuts. But, but your amendments were, many of your amendments were around this type of issue, though, true?
No.
It was broadband.
No. They were not about serving the UUA. Oh, you're thinking about the niche ones of stop directing general funds towards Metzger Park and, and West Slope. I'm tracking with you on that, yes.
And I guess my point is that I'd like to have this discussion before we, before it needs to be an amendment. You know what?
I'm not making amendments this year, hopefully. Depends on what the proposed budget has, though. If there continue to be niche investments, yes, you can count on me making amendment to remove that funding, so. But having this conversation at a different time means that we delay the adoption of the strategic plan update too, unless we want to bump things off the agenda for between now and then. I've done the heavy lift.
I'm looking to other commissioners for comments as well.
I'm, I'll speak for myself, I'm now ready to have this conversation. It looks like the chair ducked into the budget and had a conversation with Greg. I haven't, I was just prepared on, to weigh in on this particular topic, not necessarily the bigger conversations of annexations and what it entails of urban services. So I'm not prepared or don't have the subject matter experts giving me the right informations to weigh in on that particular topic, but I'm happy to weigh in on this as I have asked my questions.
Well, that's the problem that I have. As staff has teed this up, it's denying the situation that I feel I understand as a board member, because I have looked at our adopted budget to track how these resources are being funded.
Yeah, well, you raised it to us today, and I think it's incumbent on us to go do the homework now and say, okay, what does this entail? When is it coming in? When is it going to come to us? So I think you raised it, you did your due part of raising it here. And then now we take it back and say, okay, when is this conversation going to come back to the board? And then how does this impact to this and that? So I think you did your part. Now, let's finish this particular topic, and then we come back and figure out.
That's the difference, we can't finish this topic. Staff is ready to go full steam ahead, taking countywide resources and status quo of continue to invest them in this program that only serves unincorporated areas. That's the difference between what you're proposing and what I'm saying. Whoa, wait a second.
And I'm saying, it's a, to borrow Commissioner Willie's analogy, it's a yes and. Let's, let's full force on this, because what you're suggesting may or may not go forward. You, we would have to make a board decision, and it would take three board members or two more board members to agree with you.
This, this takes three board members to move forward with as well, which I'm positioning as in direct conflict.
It's a thumbs up for me, if that's what you're looking for, is a thumbs up for me as what this next step says, this particular issue here. I'm comfortable with the information you've provided, I'm comfortable with the one-on-ones I've had, and I'm comfortable to support what you're suggesting. I'm also comfortable to come back to that discussion as a board and also have that difficult conversation if we're going to address the financial elements of this. So I'm, I'm, I'm giving yes and answer.
So what, can I share what I'm hearing from the board?
I know Commissioner Rogers and I are in agreement on this.
We are, except for one thing, and that is that to me, the strategic plan is what we've always operated on, and it has to be adopted. And if that's in conflict.
But we haven't operationalized that part.
Right, we haven't, we will in twenty seconds. So if that's in conflict, then we have a problem. I have no problem with getting more information and deferring this and see how we might implement it back again. But I do, and that's why I was asking the question about require more funding and additional staff positions and all that. Isn't that in conflict? That's where I didn't go to that you did. Yeah, so I, I think we've got to get through that, the strategic plan. That, that's the center of, that's the universe, that's the North Star. We do that and then come back. So I would much prefer to defer this. Can you, giving us the numbers so we understand, you've gotten some numbers, the rest of us have not, it's going to be interesting.
All I got was verification from the current adopted budget.
Right. But I'd like to see what it's going to be for the upcoming one, too, because I'll bet it's even more than what you've said.
So if I can, listening to all the board members, maybe suggest some next steps. So today's conversation can be just informational. Thank you for the information. We can schedule another code discussion with your board, because as staff have highlighted today, there's actually multiple departments. So there's multiple different funding streams that are actually supporting code compliance. We can come back with, with that information. The chair is right, code compliance funding specific to LUT is with lottery, out of lottery funds that has been consistent, I think, for the past maybe twenty years, if my memory is correct. And so what we are dealing with is history of how Washington County has operated. We are using countywide resources for urban unincorporated areas, and
There's, there's one interjection. The sheriff's office resources, the sheriff made, the prior sheriff, the former sheriff, made a big point of adding the sheriff's office noise and code compliance work out of ESPD funds, as the report talks about. The organization does not have finance clarity on that. So it leaves us in a position of assuming it's from general fund dollars. So it's not, it has to be determined clearly. And given that our finance system, I think there's a weakness there. That's why I'm concerned that it's even more countywide funding than we're realizing.
So in time for your strategic plan, proposed action on April 23rd, I'm not confident that we can actually pull together this, this detail. So I just want to state that. Your board, at that point in time, to address concerns of conflict with the strategic plan update, could make a comment directing staff to further look at this issue as we're teeing up a conversation, and I need to consult with staff before I can commit to when we can come back to the board on a work session to have this detailed conversation. I will share publicly within the proposed budget. The proposed budget is status quo as relates to code enforcement. So if there is further direction within the proposed budget process, that is something that your board will want to, will want to consider. And then there would need to be identified a different funding source, because the other challenge that we have is we have existing county codes that we're operating under. So this isn't just a financial conversation, this is a structural conversation, and it includes ordinances, codes.
One more, one more step in the modernization of Washington County.
Good way to look at it. I'm, I'm comfortable with what you outlined, consider this as an information is what I heard you say, rather than give a thumbs up.
And I'll work with staff on a follow-up conversation and respond to your board when that'll come back to a work session.
I'm comfortable with that, sure.
Yeah, I, I just feel like I, I need to do some more homework, because we have 200 and some thousand unincorporated folks that I don't know how we completely avoid municipal services in that arena. And I want to be specific, I think, and probably much more educated on before I decide to eighty-six a service, which is what I, what I'm thinking, I'm hearing we're proposing, because it's got 2.8 million dollars in it, we don't even know where all of it's coming from. But, yeah, I'm, I'm not ready to do that. So I'm, I'm completely supportive of hitting the pause button at this point.
Well, it's much like the, the activity that Commissioner Fai was speaking about. Miller Road is not a arterial or collector of county significance. Therefore, continuing to advance active transportation improvements for a road like that, that's a neighborhood street, that is a connected neighborhood street. But that's the kind of thing that a city does. And I know that as a commission member, our bandwidth is pretty taxed just on the countywide work that we need to do. So it's not just about finances. There are good reasons why the board has maintained this status quo for years and years. It's because of the, the need that you highlight. But budget-wise, we're in a much different place. And that's the quandary that I find myself in. What I have heard here today is that maintaining the status quo is part of the proposed budget. And so I have a hard time supporting that proposed budget in maintaining the status quo, given the state of affairs with the budget and the need to make sure that we are advancing, addressing the needs of our countywide community. So there are difficult choices.
And I don't have a problem with having the conversation if it's just a budget question, but it's not.
It's all very hidden in here, isn't it?
Right, it is. And so that's where I need to circle back and say, I got to close the loop on this.
I'm a little tired of doing the heavy lifting to daylight this stuff.
Okay.
So we're not giving thumbs up on these next steps, but we do have next steps.
Yep.
And we have to figure out the calendaring.
Thank you.
One thing I forgot to highlight in board communication, hopefully you've all gotten the invitation. We usually get the invitation for International Travel and Tourism Week, but this year, it's the fortieth anniversary of National Travel and Tourism Week, and Explore Toallerton Valley is also celebrating their fortieth year this year as well. So hopefully you've all got that on your calendar.
Did on that, yeah, I got it on my desk.
May 22nd.
Okay, thanks.
So anything else for today? Yippee, we are done early today. That's it for today's work session, thank you.